Good evening. Welcome, everyone. Thank you for joining us. We'll begin this evening with our invocation given by Pastor Dan Lewis from the Troy Christian Chapel. If you'll all join me in standing, it'll be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Welcome, Pastor.
Thank you, Mayor. Shall we pray? Our merciful and heavenly Father, we stop in the midst of our busyness to acknowledge You. We realize that nothing we do has enduring significance apart from You, and it's in light of that that we ask for Your guidance and direction for our city and for this meeting. And we pray this in the name of Christ Jesus. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. The February 6, 2012, Meeting of the Troy City Council is now open. Called to order, roll call, please, Mrs. Bittner.
Mayor Daniels.
Here.
Councilmember Campbell.
Here.
Councilmember Fleming.
Here.
Councilmember Henderson.
Here.
Mayor Proton McGinnis.
Here.
Councilmember Slater.
Here.
Councilmember Teetz.
Quorum present. There are no certificates of recognition or special presentations, no carryover items, and no public hearings, so we'll move right to public comments. There are sixteen people, maybe seventeen people, who have signed up to speak. If when I call your name, you'll come to the podium, I would like to remember that I remind you that all comments are to be made to the chair or the council rather than to city management or staff. And I will be announcing when you're thirty seconds away from your five-minute time limit. It's not that I'm trying to interrupt your train of thought; that would never be my intention. I just need to move the meeting forward quickly. And again, if the audience will refrain from clapping after people are done speaking, maybe we can all join in a round of applause after everyone has had an opportunity to speak as a show of our appreciation for the participation in our process. Thank you so much. The first person on the list is Bruce Bloomingdale. Mr. Bloomingdale?
Good evening, Mayor. I have three documents to denote my prepared remarks, a copy of your Transit Center Proposal Paper, and John Joe Lex's response to that. For the record, I'm Bruce Bloomingdale, and I've lived at 4264 Coleman since 1971, forty-one years. Mayor Daniel, you opened the reading of your Transit Center Position Paper as follows, and I quote, "As the duly-elected mayor of the city of Troy, Michigan, I feel compelled to add my opposition to the construction of what is called the Troy Multimodinal Transit Center read into the public record so that the citizens of Troy, Michigan, will have this information available to them for all time." Unquote. Now, a problem with this so-called Transit Center Position Paper is that it's not about the Transit Center. The bulk of this four-and-a-half-page position paper has two themes. First, your political views on government in general. And secondly, more importantly, an attack on the city's city staff in general and the city manager more specifically. The second theme, these attacks concern me, especially in view of the fact that you insisted on reading them into the public record. Apparently, the purpose of this position paper is to justify replacing the city manager, possibly some of the staff. In support of my conclusion, I offer the following, a quote from Page 1, Paragraph 2, and I quote, "The information that has been disseminated by the Troy city management has been politically one-sided in support of this project." Unquote. And then, secondly, a quote from the last page, second to last sentence, and I quote, "I must conclude that I have no confidence in our city manager's ability to continue to perform the duties granted him in this position." Unquote. Really? The city manager, in his response to your so-called position paper, effectively and completely refutes the dozen or more allegations contained in your position paper. He starts by stating, and I quote, "Your above-referenced, Mayor, your above-referenced position paper, which contains more topics than the Transit Center, is filled with inaccuracies and is damaging my reputation. As such, I am compelled to respond." Unquote. I'd like to ask you if you've read his response? Good. "He provides a point-by-point rebuttal to each allegation with facts in detail accompanied by four attachments. It's an impressive document which will serve him well in the future if he needs to use it. Mayor Daniels, it's possible I've come to the wrong conclusion regarding your intentions pertaining to the city manager and city staff. And I sincerely hope so. You can convince me that I'm wrong by first writing a retraction of those accusations in your position paper and then reading it into the same public record your original position paper was read into. Secondly, please initiate one-on-one meetings with the city manager that will result in finding common ground to work from in pursuing goals that benefit the residents and businesses of Troy. And third, if necessary, make a public apology if one is asked for. I don't think it will be, and I hope not. Now, I think that failure to execute these suggestions will indicate to me that my initial conclusion is valid. It will also indicate your unwillingness to work with city staff and the city manager as a team. I'm concerned that any future attempts to discredit and then remove the city manager or staff will confirm the rumors that you have political cronies you want to put on the city payroll. Want some names? Ask me in private, I'll give you a couple. Leaders have the ability to bring people together to accomplish a common goal, and Troy needs leadership. Mayor, this is your opportunity to demonstrate that you have the leadership skills necessary to be the mayor of Troy.
You're at your thirty-second time limit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I look forward to hearing your thoughts in response to the public comment portion of this meeting. And in conclusion, I'd like to say may the Lord give each of us the courage, the strength, and the wisdom to do what is right even when it's hard. Thank you for your attention.
Good evening, Mr. Krent.
Good evening. As you probably have heard, I'm a thirty-three-year resident of Troy, and also I'm presently a planning commissioner for the city. What I wanted to do today is give our audience and people at home a little bit of background on what the planning commission does. Some may be familiar with what we do, and some may not be, and I thought, well, maybe I should just give an overview so when we discuss this item, the audience has a better understanding of what we're talking about. The committee, or the commission, I should say, is made up of nine members. We work with the planning department and the zoning officials to ensure that buildings in Troy develop to meet our high standards. The planning commission has two basic tools. One is the master plan, and the other is our zoning ordinance. The duties are numerous. Majority of our work, though, is really to provide preliminary site plan review for construction projects. We work with the planning department and the zoning officials to ensure plans that are presented to us meet the requirements of the master plan and the zoning ordinance. We provide suggestions to developers on ways to meet those requirements if we find deficiencies. We act as the approval authority for site plans and most of the special-use applications. Another task we perform with the city staff and consultants is to write the master plan. That's for the physical development of Troy, the buildings, the roads, the streets, how things are laid out. We're quite proud of the one we just completed. It contains plans, planning criteria, for developing really a world-class city. That means we looked at planning elements from around the world. We received input from residents and businesses at various open workshops in Troy. And then, we combined all that input, and we developed, I feel, a very comprehensive plan that utilizes world-renowned elements of planning and the desires of the Troy people. Another major task is writing the city's zoning ordinance, which provides a legal means to apply the master plan in real situations. Now, how does that impact you, the residents, the businesses in Troy? In non-technical terms, our job is to make Troy a desirable place to live and work, a place that is enjoyable, a place that's well-organized, easy to get around in, and a place people want to call home. As a result, we set the groundwork for a place where your investments in Troy property remain sound and the city continues as a destination place. Now, all this does take skill, knowledge, to do the job properly. Planning commissioners must understand the working elements of architectural and engineering drawings. It takes people who understand how buildings and activities and people interact. We also need to have an eye for art and style to ensure that the city develops in a way that's comprehensive, that's competitive with other cities. In short, we need the best qualified people on the planning commission if we want to continue to develop as a world-class city.
Thank you, Mr. Krent. Ginny Stein? Mayor Stein? Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, City Council. Since you know the critical role of the planning commission, I would think you would want the most qualified board participants, people with backgrounds and experience in construction, city planning, zoning, building, development, and architecture. The current plan commissioners certainly meet those qualifications. Bob Schultz attended every planning commission meeting for four years before his first appointment. He was appointed by two different mayors and two different city councils. In the nine years that he has served, he has missed only three meetings. Attendance is always important to keep consistency. Bob has also served on the Zoning Board of Appeals and chaired the planning commission for three years. He received certification as a citizen planner from Michigan State University Extension during his first term, and subsequently obtained certification as a master citizen planner. He has attended numerous training sessions in planning and zoning at the county, state, and national levels. Bob has represented the city at multiple Michigan Association of Planning Conferences and American Planning Association Conferences at the national level. He has also served on the Traffic Committee and participated in Troy Citizens Academy and Troy Police Academy, and is currently a member of the Citizens Code Enforcement Volunteers. He has thirteen years of institutional planning commission knowledge. Tom Stratt has also served on the planning commission for nine years. He served as chair of the planning commission for two years and was the planning commission's representative to the Zoning Board of Appeals for two terms. Tom attended numerous national planning conferences, which he felt were key to good planning and zoning. He was involved in the planning of the Big Beaver Corridor Study and was instrumental in capturing Lawrence University to do the Maple Road Corridor Study. He initiated the Troy Architectural Business Beautification Awards and the Holiday Decoration Awards, which are presented each year. Tom established Stratt and Associates Incorporated Architects/Planners in 1972, headquartered right here in Troy, which has accomplished comprehensive architectural and planning services throughout the country. He's registered in six states. The diversification of his projects include private, municipal, and educational facilities. Excuse me. He is responsible for the renovation that turned the former Troy Community Center into the 56th Fourth District Court Building. Tom designed one of the first buildings in the state of Michigan utilizing an active solar energy system. The Michigan State Senate passed a state senate resolution for Tom's pioneering achievements, and he was appointed by the federal government to review energy grant proposals for a seven-state region, including Troy, including Michigan, excuse me. Now, Lon Alman has quite a different background, but no less impressive. Lon first served on the Brownfield Redevelopment Commission for six years, and for the past four, on the planning commission. As a planning commission member, he also earned certification from Michigan State University Extension and was the commission's representative to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Lon also attended Michigan Association of Planners Conference, citing it as most worthwhile and a viable means of keeping up with new trends in the world of municipal planning. Lon is a builder by trade, achieving his builder's license in 1970, but he also has a bachelor of science degree in biology, so it should be no surprise that he has an extensive ecological background. His advocacy for clean waters and natural resource protection won him two awards, one from the Clinton River Watershed Council and one from the state advocacy for clean water. Lon was also a grant writer for the environment. To preserve aquatic habitat and to retain natural features were both big winners. Lon initiated and authored Troy's Wetlands and Natural Features Ordinance, which is intended to protect natural features, including woodlands. The city is fortunate to have someone with his unique ecological background to work on these initiatives. These are men with irrefutable skills, knowledge, talent, and professionalism. We can be assured that the character of the Troy community will remain if we keep the planning commission in their hands. We need to retain institutional memory, and their years of experience would certainly do that.
Thank you so much. Matt Binkowski, please.
Good evening. I speak tonight against the nomination of Gordon Shepkey to the planning commission. While I could stand here and discuss Mr. Shepkey's limited qualifications for the position, or his angry CHICOM comments during a previous council meeting, I will only discuss one issue: meeting attendance. As you may be aware, Mr. Shepkey is currently a member of the Troy Plan, of the City Traffic Committee. This committee meets very infrequently. Specifically, the committee meets only once a month, but only as necessary. The committee typically doesn't meet in the summer months or in December to accommodate vacation schedules of the members. In fact, in 2011, this committee only met five times. Furthermore, traffic committee meetings typically only last an hour or so. Yet despite this infrequent schedule, Gordon Shepkey has missed over a third of traffic committee meetings since his appointment in 2005. In fact, at two of these scheduled meetings, the committee could not conduct business due to a lack of a quorum, based in part on the absence of Mr. Shepkey. When the committee cannot meet due to a lack of quorum, it is a major inconvenience, not only for the citizens who have business before the committee, but also a waste of time and tax dollars for city staff and police who must attend these meetings. Now, compare the undemanding time commitment of the traffic committee to the rigorous time commitment of the planning commission. Planning commission typically meets twice a month. Its meetings can last hours. Since Mr. Shepkey has missed over a third of all traffic committee meetings during his tenure, why should we believe that his attendance will be any better at the more rigorous planning commission schedule? The citizens and taxpayers of Troy deserve better than a man who fails to take his commitments to the city seriously. I urge you to reject the nomination of Gordon Shepkey to the Troy Planning Commission.
Thank you. Kumar Bhad? Mr. Bhad?
Madam Mayor, respected council members, and fellow citizens, could I have liked to speak on the topic of appointments to the planning commission and why you should retain the current members who are eligible for reappointment? Whether we like it or not, we are living in a globalized society. The mantra should be, "Seek opportunities globally, but realize the benefits locally." Nowhere is this requirement greater than in Troy or and metro Detroit. Over the past decade, our cities in southeast Michigan, including Troy, have lost ground economically. We are losing our manufacturing ecosystem to China. In software development and maintenance, we are losing ground to India. Vacant buildings and manufacturing sites in and around Troy are a testament to these losses. However, in the midst of these monumental losses, a few of the local Troy startups in the software industry are expressing frustrations in attracting and retaining talent. Our planning commission, with input from a wide cross-section of the population, has created a master plan in addressing these specific needs that will attract and retain many of the young professionals in our city. We know that our master plan is widely lauded in Michigan. How did we accomplish this? The answer, in simple words, are the members of the planning commission, people who are well-qualified, deeply experienced, and dedicated. I salute them for their valuable contributions. Mayor Daniels, in your guest opinion column in the Oakland Press dated August 12, 2011, you wrote, quote, "That all officers are to have a similar level of scrutiny, testing, bonding, and licensing requirements for verification of their ability to perform the duties of the elected offices of public trust before placing their names on a ballot for election or before consideration for appointment." End quote. I agree with that part of the statement. However, when you examine the credentials of the three suggested nominees for the planning commission against the existing members who you'd like to replace, it is very clear that none of the nominees has any qualifications or experience related to town planning or strategic economic planning and development. I don't clearly understand how, in the case of, say, Mr. Gordon Shepkey, with a master plumber license and a career as a pipe fitter, or in the case of Mr. Locken, a degree in criminal justice, and in the case of Mr. Stephen Johansson, thirty-three years as an ASE certified mechanic can ever relate to the deep-seated experience necessary for addressing the needs of a very large, diverse group of professionals residing in our city. I just don't get it. Compare that to Mr. Robert Schulz, who has institutional knowledge with over six years as a master planner, twenty-six years in servicing the marketing arm of a Fortune 50 company, or Mr. Thomas Stratt with a distinguished service as the owner of an architectural firm, Stratt and Associates, with active memberships in various professional architectural national boards, recognized authority by the federal government, and Mr. Lon Ullman, who, together with other members of the planning commission, has served splendidly in developing the award-winning master plan. Mayor Daniels, perhaps you might be able to explain to us how the three members that you have suggested to replace, the highly qualified members of the planning commission, will ever serve our needs. If we make the strategic mistake in appointing people who are not ready to address the economic challenges and the needs of a growing ethnic population, we risk in losing our premier position as the city of tomorrow. We can do better. We deserve to retain the best talent. Until you can find better qualified candidates, I strongly urge this council to reconsider the candidacy of the suggested nominees and retain the existing members of the planning commission. Thank you, and God bless our city.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council and city staff. I'm here tonight to talk about the planning commission. Next to the mayor and the city council, the planning commission has the most influence on the future of Troy. Most people have a pretty good idea of what the mayor and the council do. The planning commission, not so much. And yet, the work that they do is seen and is felt by each and every resident. Their work is the reason why our neighborhoods are not adjoined to industrial properties. Their work is the reason why we don't have tall office buildings interspersed with residential areas. Their work is the reason why our wetlands are put under consideration when there is proposed development. Their work is the reason we don't have legions of residents crying out, "Not in my backyard." Their work, the master plan, has provided the footprint that allowed the city of Troy to grow in population, to grow in business development, and in consequence, to grow in prosperity and in reputation. Plainly put, it is the judicious and thoughtful wisdom of the planning commission and that master plan that turned the city's motto of "The city of tomorrow, today" from a stretch goal into a living reality within a generation. But unlike the mayor and the city council, we, the people of Troy, do not get to vote for the planning commissioners. All we citizens can do is implore the council to vote wisely. Madam Mayor, I understand it would be highly unlikely for you to now vote against your own nominees, but I say to the six council members that the citizens of Troy ask you to vote for people who will reflect the values and wishes of our diverse community. Vote for people who would respect the privilege of this appointment by putting in their due diligence and fulfill all obligations in this post, including being physically present for meetings. We ask that you vote for people who will continue with the forward momentum that has been outlined in our nationally acclaimed master plan. We ask you to vote for people who have the credentials for building cities, and more importantly, for building communities. Mr. Fleming, as the longest-standing person on council, I'm especially looking to you to provide your leadership and your wisdom in upcoming discussion. You know full well the importance of having thoroughly qualified individuals on the planning commission, as well as the benefits of having a master plan that is used as the gold standard for cities across our nation. Troy has come too far only to have its master plan dismantled. I urge you to consider what is best for the city, what is best for the county, and what is best for the state of Michigan going into this planning commission vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Sue Wilkinson?
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Mayor Daniels and city council members. Thank you very much for this opportunity to speak. I'm here today as the chairperson of the State's Commission on Asian-Pacific-American Affairs, and I would like to comment on an offensive public statement made at a recent city council meeting. In that city council meeting, a racial slur was used by a gentleman being considered for the city planning commission and was accepted without comment by the city council. That term, "CHICOM," which is derived from Chinese communist, evokes ethnic hatred and prejudice against the government and people of China. While every individual has the freedom of speech, the use of such terms in a public form should not be condoned by the city council. I understand that the city council may not have understood the implication of the term at the time, and I would like for you to have an opportunity to explain. On behalf of our commission, which represents over 200,000 Asian-Americans and Pacific Islanders who live in Michigan, I request an apology and a comment from the city council. Islanders who live in Michigan, I request an apology and a comment from the city council. As a neighbor of Troy, I know you're committed to make your city a welcoming place for all people. You have one of the most diverse groups of residents in Michigan, speaking more than eighty languages. In recognizing Troy's diversity, the Michigan Humanities Council recently awarded a grant to Troy Historical Society to tell the stories of diverse cultures. By making our region welcoming to the international community and immigrants, together we can attract international investment in businesses that will create jobs and reinvent Michigan. Our commission, along with the Governor Snyder's team on the Global Michigan Initiative, is willing and ready to work with you to make Troy an even better place. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Daniels and council members and the members of our community. I'm a Troy resident. I'm also a commissioner on the Asian Pacific Commission, as Ms. Wilkinson mentioned, and I'm also the president of the International Institute of Metropolitan Detroit, which promotes and celebrates diversity. I have been informed that many people are appalled by the inappropriate comments made by Mr. Gordon Shepkey, nominee for Troy City Planning Commission. During his remarks on Transit Center, Mr. Shepkey referred to the people of China, Chinese descent, as ChiComs, which is again is a Korean War-era slur. This kind of language is absolutely unacceptable and will not be tolerated. It is disheartening to see the stakeholders of Troy City using racial slur against their own community members. Troy is the second-most diverse city in Michigan and home to a large number of Chinese and Asian immigrants who add value and who add value to the community and to the economy of Troy. Almost one out of every five people you meet in Troy is an Asian American. That's 20 percent, ladies and gentlemen. And one out of every ten businesses in Troy is owned by an Asian American, and this is the statistics I just pulled from the U.S. Census Bureau for 2010. A racial slang such as this is discriminatory towards Asian Americans, and in a time when America needs to unite and Michigan is trying to transform into global Michigan in order to recover, of course, from the economic downturn that we've gone through, such an act is clearly a cause of disintegration of the community, and this will also prevent us from the recovery that we are looking for. Further, using this kind of language is a kind of bullying. I'm an educator by profession, and I'm a cultural consultant, and I do know and I do train young people, youth, about bullying. Stereotyping, demonstrating animosity by using such language is the first step of bullying. And as a teacher and consultant and a resident considered, residing here for over twenty years, my two sons graduated from Troy High School, I think it is a bad example for our youth in Troy and in Michigan. Public and elected officials representing people are viewed as role models. Mr. Shepkey is setting a bad example. His racially insensitive comments are hurtful to some of the most contributing and valued members of Troy community. As a Troy resident and Maybach commissioner, I would like to advise Troy Planning Commission nominee, Mr. Shepkey, to refrain from using this kind of language in future and to offer a public apology to the community members. I would also like to request Troy Mayor Ms. Daniels to nominate for the planning commission leaders who unite and not leaders who divide. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ralph Korbel, I apologize, I didn't see your name on the list, Ralph Korbel?
My name is Ralph Korbel, and I'm a thirty-one-year resident and owner of properties in Troy. My issue in the subject of discussion is the apparent rise and now the fall of the city of tomorrow, today, and I'm concerned about your apparent prescription for the future of this city. I've known each mayor of the city over the years. I've known all the council members over the years, and each of these persons has earned my respect and the respect of the city residents. Respect is earned and not deserved to be a right attached to an elected seat. Person earns respect by affirmative action on behalf of every person. Person earns respect by staying away from special interests or lobbying groups. Accept my presentation as constructive criticism and let it fit where it does for each of you. Person earns respect by committing to uphold the Constitution of the United States and the charters of the state of Michigan and the city of Detroit without question. Any oath of office neglecting that commitment to the public is a sham and a mockery of justice, and that goes for mayor, city council, anyone who might be elected within our city. As a citizen of Troy, demand it be established in the city of Troy that every elected person consciously and with full knowledge commit to upholding the charter of the city of Troy and that any person not making this commitment be barred from office. Based on what I've learned, it's now time for you to look inward and publicly acknowledge the negative intent and any negative actions and the negative outcomes that you may have produced and to mend your ways. The United States Constitution refers to public servants as serving in the capacity of, by, and for the people. You are so also to serve. Your obligation to serve accordingly is not a choice, it is an obligation to the public at large, and that's what's expected by every person. It is now time to acknowledge reality and change the slogan, should it? The fallen city of tomorrow, today? How tragic. I fear for what may have happened in the last several months. I just returned from a four-month voyage around the world, and I came back, and it seems to me that maybe a Trojan horse has been brought into our city and out-crawled some persons who may be bent on changing our city that has been built up by a great team of dedicated city council members and citizens. You, city council members, are caretakers of our city. The city belongs to the people, and history reveals that persons with their own agenda misrepresent themselves and also fool others. Look into your personal histories and make sure that this doesn't fit for you. I observe here, and what I'm concerned about is some of the fall of Troy. Were you inside the Trojan horse? Seems as though some of you might have been there. Let not history repeat itself, for this historic Troy in which we live is of the same nature as the historical one. Troy was the best. Troy is now a much lesser city, and you are looking at one citizen who's outraged by some apparent changes. Either you build or you tear down. Either you honor the golden past of this city or you tarnish that golden past. Either you serve the people or you rob the populace. Either you respect yourself so you can respect the public or you disrespect yourself and therefore disrespect the public. Either you build on the past or you pull down the foundation and bring down the hard work that we've had for the past. Either you come with a positive agenda for the citizens or you come with your own agenda. Actions speak louder than words. The truth hurts the guilty. Either you embrace goodness and promote positive change or you represent an effective destructive process. Either you embrace administration or you connive to destroy administration. Either you pursue efforts to build togetherness in this city or you fracture the very fabric of the city. Either you are a puppet of lobbying or you are objective and discharge your responsibilities at arm's length. Either you function in a glass house or you secrete yourselves into darkness.
Thirty seconds, sir. Thirty seconds remaining.
I don't understand why there was just a secret meeting that was just held without any reason announced for that, and I object to that. The citizens have a right to know that. May I have additional time?
No, sir.
By a vote of all the members of the council?
No, sir. We'll have to move forward. You can come back again another time if you'd like to continue the discussion.
I will do that.
But we have to move the meeting forward.
Thank you.
Richard Peters?
Council, folks, nice to meet you. Glad to see you chipper and up tonight. I just want to talk about, a little bit about freezing taxes on land for environmental purposes. I think we should maybe fifty to a hundred properties on a limited basis.
Mr. Peters, could you move the microphone down a little bit?
Yeah. And what I was considering, thinking about, like the wooded areas on private property, what I was thinking about is to encourage the folks that own those homes, not to sell them and divide them up, and I was thinking that if we could freeze the taxes to encourage them to keep the properties as they are, that might be a first step so we could preserve the environment in our city in that respect. It kind of is a continuing of the plan I submitted last time where we would promote less than one percent of the property tax cut basis for the older homes to upgrade and to kind of, in a revolving manner, to keep the city upgrading itself. Let's see what else we got here. I think, yeah, also I want to talk about that, well, I also agree that it should be in an area of growth. Like if our city, the growth of the economy in the city, let's say it's going at two to three percent, one percent can be used for those measures for preserving property and improving the older homes, if you will, and make them more energy efficient. Second, I want to talk about the bridge to Canada that we're talking about, and I was wondering maybe the Department of Interior might want to take a look at it, because I would think that if we had, let's say, a bullet train run from Toronto via Detroit to Troy, where that might be an improvement, and maybe the Department of Transportation also, and they could elicit funds from wherever, I don't know how they do it, but just to take a look at that. Also, I want to support the President's housing bill in that respect. If, in fact, that would bring down, refinancing, folks could refinance their homes in order to upgrade them, put energy, more efficiency on them, I think that would be a good idea for Troy. And finally, I want to talk about the Israeli-Iranian conflict, okay? Now, this is important, at least in my mind, because the less we go to war, the better off, I think, our country, particularly with the way it's affected our economy lately. And I think that, you know, we all support Israel, and we all support, you know, something to, I don't support a tax against Israel or our country, et cetera, but the fact is, Israel, nothing is said about these settlements on the West Bank. Now, we can bow-beat and do all this other stuff, you know, and I support the security of these countries, but that, too wrong, do not make a right. And we cannot continually live in a gla, you know, he was talking about a glass, we just, what right do these people have to keep stealing people's land? I mean, I don't think that's right at all, to be honest about it. It's a violation of the United Nations, and it doesn't serve the purpose of this country. And there's an outpouring here. Not only that, you are going to be dealing with a conflict of Shias and Sunnis. Now, if you want to divide Shias and Sunnis, fine, and if you look in history, you look at the tenure of religious wars, how long do they last? Now, if that's the goal we're heading for, I don't think it's a very good idea, because not only is there almost a brush fire being, nobody knows what the end results of these so-called revolutions is going, I mean, I don't want to, but the fact is, or overdramatize, but the fact is, I think we should, you know, at least sit back and take a look at what's going on here before we start jumping off the pier here to placate one or what have you, or, you know, to make, to make, to lower down the decibel, what I'm trying to get at, is that I'd hope for a little more patience or resolve in this matter, a little more moral courage.
Thirty seconds, Mr. Peters.
Yeah, we got you. Yeah, I was just letting you go. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Ammar Reinhardt, please. Good evening, Mr. Reinhardt.
Evening, Maynard Mark. Mayor Daniels, the other thing I got to say about this pleasant planning, whatever you call it, are you happy with all these taxes? They need extra taxes for this, they need more taxes for this, and no matter how brainy they are, that solar house, who's that solar guy on the planning commission? That doesn't work. How about our polluted lakes all over the city? He don't care. He writes grants. He don't care. He can write grants. In fact, that grant was easy one to get from the state that I tried to give to somebody at the nature center when it was announced, because there's no central point in this city except for Tom Kamanski to give money to. If you need to give any money to any city project, he has a website. Give it to Tom, and he'll give it to whom he wants to. He controls three or four entities in the city already. Also, too, I'd like to make a comment. What I do on my Facebook page and my international papers, I say Troy, Michigan, owned by the Chinese government, and I'm going to splice that and put it right in the international news column that the Chinese is forcing our mayor to apologize to them. I think that's pretty funny, because I've been doing that for years on the internet, that Troy, Michigan is owned by the Chinese, and now we got the, because remember, the mayor took me to court. Did I ask her to apologize to me? I'm supposed to talk to you. But did I? No. Did I ever bring it up much? No. I'm not talking to the Hindi population. It is a proud race that I think is underdeveloped in this city, and there should be more of them on the committee, because that country's been going longer than America. So don't get me confused with the Hindus and Pakistanis.
Please, watch your remarks, Mr. Reinhardt, please.
The Kresge Foundation gave the Rochester Hills Library money for leadership to run the world corporations, and our library is doing cultural things, and we're supposed to be the city of the world. Now, that's pretty sad, isn't it? We're supposed to be the leader of the world, and we're doing cultural centers in our library, and Kresge Foundation is giving Rochester Hills money to make leaders of the world, because I know Ramson, and I talk to him, like I talk to you. I know a lot of people don't even invest in Troy, that's what I tell them. Okay, and then the library, why do Republicans have these, a free room in the library to meet? I thought the homeowners paid that taxes on that. And then the Republicans are based in the Troy Chamber of Commerce, using free facilities in our city. At least the Democrats charge you at the door to get in, but not the cheap Republicans. And as far as Finch and Company go, I send them a monthly report of what this city's been doing for the last five years. These are some of the phone numbers if you want to talk to these guys personally, but I send it out in the City of Troy, Michigan, one of my emails for five or six years. They never questioned who it was. And for the trans flight sites in here, I play the trombone.
Mr. Reinhardt, please.
And there's thirty-two different ways to use your tongue on a trombone.
Mr. Reinhardt, would you please?
Hey, that's science.
Please sit down. Thank you.
That's okay. I'll do to you what I did to Schillen. Have a good day.
Good evening.
Hi. Right here? Yeah. Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. I have a few things that I would like to say in support of a transit center. I know it's already passed and approved, I know, okay. I will make this short and to the point. A transit center can take cars off the road, making our air cleaner and better for our environment. It can also, it can also help reduce traffic congestion on some of our, on some of our major roads, especially during morning and afternoon rush hours. A transit center can also reduce overcrowding on some of the smart bus lines. I ride the buses quite a bit. I know this for a fact, that some of these bus lines that we currently have get so crowded there is no empty seats. You have to stand on the bus and hold on to something so you don't fall down. I have seen times where buses had to pass right by people that were standing and waiting because they were too full to take any more people. I believe there is also a fire code on how many people can ride and be on a bus. Also, a lot of the bus stops around the metro, around the metro Detroit area have absolutely no shelters to protect the riders from rain, snow, ice, and wind. And in the summertime, it's the excessive heat that can make it dangerous to stand outside waiting for a bus. I feel the bus riders around the metro Detroit deserve to have something better. They have endured and put up with enough with our past and present bus systems. Thank you for giving me the opportunity and privilege to speak.
Thank you so much. Dan Krichbaum? Mitch Baum? I'm sorry.
It's a hard one. That's okay?
It is.
I'm used to it. And I don't really have a lot of paper, I mean, I have a lot of papers here, but I'm not going to use all those papers. Very quick remarks. My name's Dan Krichbaum. I'm the executive director of the Michigan Department of Civil Rights, and the Department of Civil Rights has two main missions. One is that we investigate and enforce all the civil rights laws in Michigan. We settle about twenty-five-hundred cases each year, and so that's what I'm concerned about today, prevention of discrimination. Last Friday, I had the opportunity to attend the Asian Pacific American Affairs Commission meeting, which was held here in Troy. I'm sure you can imagine our collective dismay when we learned that a person testifying during a Troy City Council meeting about your multimodal transit center used a slur that was relatively common during the Korean War. That term was unacceptable in those days. It's been unacceptable since then, and it certainly remains unacceptable today. My boss, Governor Rick Snyder, in his 2011 State of the State, charged the Michigan Economic Development Corporation and the Michigan Department of Civil Rights with overseeing a program called Global Michigan. In short, this program seeks to recruit and retain immigrant talent and demonstrate what a welcoming place Michigan is. And last week, the governor stated on NBC, "You know, we educate people from other countries, and then we tell them to leave. That's dumb. Immigrants are actually job creators and not job stealers." Now, even though Troy, most citizens understand that you have one of the finest communities in Michigan, a very pluralistic community representative of many different religions, races, age groups, disability groups, national origin groups, and you have a major public school system, also known for its multiculturalism, Troy today is being portrayed as xenophobic and backward. And I'm here to say, in terms of the Michigan Department of Civil Rights, we cannot survive in Michigan unless we work with everyone, unless we include everyone, unless we are doing, as you are doing tonight, listening to everyone. But we have to especially work on respecting everyone, and we have the kind of racial slurs that are going around in this community right now, we need to put a stop to it. One of the things in finishing the Civil Rights Department does, we work in a host of communities across the state in various ways to work on issues of divisiveness. We are very successful in many different places in terms of developing inclusive programs and an inclusive atmosphere. So if you'd like to call on us at some point, we would be glad to serve the city of Troy. Thank you very much.
Thank you.[1489.33][1489.33](APPLAUSE). Michael Woolert, please. Good evening, Mr. Woolert.
Mayor, council members, I was a little surprised, well, first off, my name is Mike Woolert. I live about a mile from here in that direction. I came here tonight because I was hoping to witness the restoration of the cuts that we had in the Nature Center and in the Historical Society and in the library, because I assumed that if we could afford a $6 million transit center, the maintenance on that structure, the security on the structure that's in the middle of an industrial complex, we should be able to afford things that the majority of residents appreciate. There are six trains a day that go through that center. There are twenty-eight people a day that use the current center. There are no Amtrak schedules that are adding trains to that center, but we have a library, which parking lot was overflowing yesterday. It was overflowed into the city a lot when we walked by. Tonight, it's not quite overflowing, but it's close to it. The community center has had, been hit by this. The Historical Society, which is close to where we live, tremendous hits there. It's closed more than it's open. I think the council needs to think about the eighty thousand some people who live in Troy and focus resources on those people and not focus resources on a vision that someone has that isn't being delivered by the other activities that need to do that vision, whether it be Semcog or the other areas within the state. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Michelle Hodges?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and all residents of Troy, and thank you, Mayor, for doing what you could to stop that earlier, those earlier comments. I appreciate that. I come to you this evening with my heart and a slingshot. I'm very grateful to Dr. Wilkinson and Executive Director Krichbaum and the others that have spoken so eloquently tonight, because they help us measure the impact of decision-making that we undertake here and forms of speech that we're seeing more regularly. Life is a gift, and one of God's most precious creations and gifts to us is each other, the ethnicities, the cultures, the traditions, and the lifestyles we all represent. And as I look back at my own life, some of my most rewarding moments have been when I've been interacting and learning with people that are different than me, and the understanding that comes from that understanding. That understanding is personal and professional development like no other. In fact, one of my favorite quotes is, "You can't possibly have a narrow mind if you have a thick passport." So, it truly pains me that anyone from any group, even for a moment, might feel unwelcome. That is not Troy. I repeat, that is not Troy. The Chamber is working hard to uncloak the real Troy for people like Dr. Wilkinson, for we place high value on a diverse and inclusive Troy. Last week, the Chamber met with the CEO of the Michigan Roundtable of Diversity and Inclusion, Tom Costello, whom, by the way, is choosing not to shop in Troy any longer. I'm hoping we can change that. From that meeting, we are now preparing a series of initiatives that will be available for public release very soon. This is our way of taking a strong stand on the importance of diversity and inclusion, particularly if Troy expects to be relevant as a 21st century community. And, as you deliberate tonight, we urge you too to keep this value in mind. Our boards and commissions are important, and the Planning Commission is particularly important to the business community. It is highly technical and plays a key role in interacting with investors, the mainstay of Troy. Please ensure the proper credentials and, even more importantly, mind sense exist when making this important decision. Let's work together and not against one another. We all want what's best for Troy. I'm convinced of that. Adios, namaste, ni hao, buenos sera, guten abend, sayonara, arrivederci, au revoir. Good evening, and thank you.
Thank you.[1758.66][1758.66](APPLAUSE).
Good evening, Mr. Wells.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I sent you all an email about two weeks ago in support of the Transit Center, but I wanted to point out, I'm a Troy resident for fifteen years, and I've also worked for a company called Toyota Go Say North America. It's Asian-owned, it's been in Troy since 1994. I wanted to point out to people that back in 2008, we paid about $175,000 in property taxes and approximately...